Good evening, everyone. Today is Monday, June 6, 2011. I apologize for the late start. We had executive session prior to this with many, many good things happening tonight. At this time, I'd actually like to invite two scouts, Tim Manning and Robert Tomaska, who are from Troop 17, Bryan Junior High, to come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could all please, please rise at this time. Thank you. Now, I want you to step up on the top stair there if you'd like. There you go. Perfect. And at this time, to make this meeting official, I ask Clerk Spencer to call the role, please.
Heza.
Here.
Guttenkopf.
Here.
Leader.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Graham.
Here.
Palomsky.
Here.
York.
Here.
Hipskin.
Here.
Healy.
Here.
Levin.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Morley.
Here.
Wagner.
Here.
Mulliner.
Here.
Fourteen present, zero absent.
Fourteen present, zero absent. We have an official quorum. And next on the agenda is a presentation by the, one of the Board of Directors for Illinois City Managers Association, Mr. Joe Brennig, who was also the Village Manager of Carroll Stream. My dear friend Frank Severino, who's the Mayor out in Carroll Stream. City Manager Brennig, take it away, sir.
Thank you, Mayor DeCiani, and members of the City Council. Tonight, it's my pleasure to recognize Tom Borchert on behalf of the Illinois City County Managers Association. It's my, my pleasure to know Tom for 30 years. I was an intern at DuPage Mayor's and Managers Conference when Tom was Public Works Director. And I guess I followed his career at some level, having worked in public works and then becoming a city manager. But during that time, he's always represented Elmhurst, DuPage County, and our profession with the highest level of professionalism. He's been somebody that you could look up to and admire, and I think he's made Elmhurst a better place, hopefully, for all of you. With that, I would like to, on behalf of the Illinois City County Manager, Management Association, acknowledge a $100 contribution towards the International City County Managers Association Fund for the Profession in Tom's name. With that, Tom, if you'd like to come forward, I can present you with this. Thank you.
I certainly want to thank the Mayor and the City Council for allowing me to continue to do the job that I really love doing, but a special thanks to, to, to Joe for coming out and for the fellow city managers. When you get recognized by your peers that know what you're doing in a very detailed fashion and recognize in a positive way, it is very much appreciated. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I know you've got other places to be on Monday nights besides coming around.
This will be the first of many things happening tonight for City Manager Borchert. Before I go on to public forum, I would like to acknowledge Alderman Jan Vanek, who's in the audience, sitting actually next to former President of the Board of Education, Kathy Jordan. We have two former elected officials that have done many, many good things for our town that are here, here tonight as well. So, Clerk Spencer, do we have any, anybody sign up for public forum at this time?
We do, but before we go to item four, five, excuse me.
Oh, excuse me.
Item four, we need the receipt of written communication.
Written communications and our petitions in the public. Is there anyone that would like to present those? Thanks, Marilyn. Anybody at this time would please present those to Clerk Spencer? And now we'll open up the public forum. Clerk Spencer, if you'd please be good enough to do so.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We have about eight people tonight, so we'll start with Tom Cruise, 868 Saylor.
Mr. Cruise, if you could please give us three minutes of your quality time. We appreciate it. And, uh...
You got it.
Welcome to Elmhurst City Hall.
Thanks. I think that we need to prioritize our needs and flooding budget. I mean, let, I mean, let's say if the consultant says we need $10 or $20 million to do this, how are we going to pay for the, for that? As a commercial building roofing consultant, I would replace one or two roofs a year and maybe come up with a five- or 10-year plan. Maybe we need to do the same thing with our flood plan. And I mean, we, and not some paid consultant, not cutting up the consultant, but we as Elmhurst citizens have a huge stake in this. I have questions on the, on flood, flood questions. Has anything changed since last June, July? And what are we doing to stop inflows from homes that are tied directly into the water pipes? Two, when, when are we going to hear Mr. Burke's report? And do we get a discount if he uses any part of the Harzer report? For example, the Harzer report recommends retention ponds for South Elmhurst. If he takes the same thing from the Harzer, do we get a discount? Maybe I'm being cheap, but why not? Are we increasing the pipe sizes for the water sanitation system? For, who do we call when the water starts to rise in the streets? Last year, the police department, they didn't know anything. They've referred us to a couple of numbers which we called, but, and, you know, we usually got voicemails. And then the last thing, I just, the water, or the water increases. You know, I've read in the paper that we're, you know, can we negotiate a lower rate increase with Chicago? And if we can, who, you know, who's doing this for, for us? Can we go for maybe a 3% rate increase versus the 8% discussed in the papers? Many Elmhurst residents are on fixed incomes and cannot afford these increases. And what are we doing about stopping the, the past tax increases of the past two years? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Claude Pagash, 566 West Gladys.
My name is Claude Pagash. I live at 566 West Gladys, and I have the Elmhurst in the penitent here, and I found it rather interesting. Seems like the Finance Chairman is willing to blame the city of Chicago for the need to raise water prices and sewage prices in the city of Elmhurst. Unfortunately, what he didn't bring up was the fact that the DuPage County Water Commission lost $60 million. Lost. Can't find it. The ex-chairman of the DuPage County walked away with $30 million. Now, unfortunately for the paper, the Finance Chairman doesn't say how much the city is going to charge, doesn't say how much DuPage Water System is going to raise the price. So, the 8% is kind of in limbo. And then, he feels that there's a necessity of adding another 8% to sewage because he adds 8% to the water. The logic eludes me. It really does. Until we can find out what the city's going to charge and what DuPage County Water System is going to charge to pay off that 70 million, and then he brings up the idea of the Quarter Cent. Let me remind him, the Quarter Cent was a referendum to pay off the bonds to put in the system, not to do anything else with it. Unfortunately, the county chairman didn't feel that way about it. Unfortunately for the Finance Chairman, he has the ability to increase taxes on property and gas. But when it comes down to the problem that existed last year of only 15 people getting kickbacks from the city, the Finance Committee seems to be at a loss. It's a year now. A year debate on how much we should raise the income of the poor souls so we get more than 15 people getting a kickback. But it seems to languish in the Finance Department as if it had bubonic plague. If he's going to just keep on raising taxes and the percentage on water that he doesn't know what's, I don't know what DuPage Water System pays, I don't know what the city is So, what do I know about the 8% as a need? And then he throws in the water treatment.
Claude, you are getting close to your three minutes. You can wrap it up.
Yeah, so I wish the Finance Committee would, in their argument, point out the fact that the DuPage Water System and the committee that ran it took the people of DuPage to the cleaners.
Thank you, Claude.
John Robeletti, 625 West Gladys.
John Robeletti, 625 West Gladys. I can understand there being a raise in the water rate, but we should find out how much, what DuPage is going to charge Elmhurst. And also, I don't think there should be a tax on the sewage because there sure isn't going to be any more water going in there than there is now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robeletti.
Marilyn O'Redo, 912 Saylor.
I'm Marilyn O'Redo from 912 Saylor. I present myself to you, the City Council, and I bring two issues, electricity and water. I will address the electricity first. I am happy to report for the entire month of May, I had no outages. I, I even received a call from the Elmhurst press during one of the recent storms, and I was asked if I had electricity. People are beginning to be aware of our electrical problem on the south side. About two weeks ago, the New York Times was on my driveway. You know, I don't subscribe. And much to my surprise, the front page story was on Chicago and how this city was addressing the problem of rainwater. One of the things that Chicago was doing is to replace blacktop on bike lanes and parking spaces with permeable pavers. Now, these pavers will allow 80% of rainwater to filter through them to the ground below. Immediately, I thought, that is what should be done to the parking spaces at Eldridge Permeable pavers could be used in most parking lots, beginning with our very own City Hall, to set the example. Since reading this article, I have talked to landscape architects about permeable pavers, and in addition, I've asked about French drains. It has occurred to me, why not put a French drain on the parkway? Of course, you would need a city permit and a plan that would be submitted. This parkway French drain would absorb some of the water from the street during heavy rains. Now, in just a few weeks, we'll have our one-year anniversary of last year's summer flooding. Nothing to celebrate. In this one year, the city has allocated $0.5 million for overhead sewers and many, many more thousands for a plan from Christopher Engineering. To my knowledge, nothing specific has been done to prepare for the future storms and flooding, not even increased street cleaning to prevent clogged drains. Overhead sewers will prevent sewage from entering the home. However, homeowners can still experience stormwater coming into their basements.
Marilyn, you're coming up on your three minutes. If you could wrap it up. Claude, you could finish up.
Okay. I believe that the time has come for you, the elected members of this council, to begin to truly address the problem of rainwater. Hoping that the water can be tamed under the roads is not a solution. Use the task force, think out of the box, and find ways to make our city ready for climate changes, like experiencing a 100-year flood every year or every five years. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Marilyn.
Tamara Brenner, 137 North Caroline Avenue.
I'm interested in something that happened with the Zoning and Planning Commission last month. The meeting of May 26, 2011, had on the agenda case number 11PO2, which requested to amend the text of the Elmhurst zoning ordinance for the purpose of deleting required setbacks and increasing allowable building height from four stories to six stories. This was to include a public hearing which required the notification of all properties within 500 feet. It is my understanding that that proper notification was not given and that Zoning and Planning Commission meeting was subsequently canceled. I looked into this a little further because it seemed curious to me that, that a text amendment like that was being proposed that would change everything for the city. And I reviewed the meeting minutes from April 4th for the Zoning and Planning Commission, where it said during the month of May, the city of Elmhurst as applicant will be requesting zoning ordinance text amendments previously authorized by City Council. I don't remember the City Council previously authorizing that. Maybe you did, and if so, I'd like to know when it was because I couldn't find it myself. If this city is going to have six-story buildings anywhere in the downtown or elsewhere, it seems like that would be something the community would be interested in discussing ahead of time before changing the zoning code. One other thing I noticed on tonight's agenda, item G on the consent agenda is Economic Development Alternatives Report for the city, and that's being referred to, referred to Development and Planning Committee. And we saw a little bit of the report in the agenda packet, but I was wondering if the Mayor would be interested because I'm sure he's read the whole report and perhaps discussing where he sees things going with this, even though it is very early in the process. I'd be interested to hear his thoughts on that at the appropriate time later in the meeting. Thanks.
Thank you, Doctor.
Okay. Next, we have Jan Vanek, and she resides at 365 North Myrtle.
Alderman Vanek, welcome.
Yep. Correction, 368. I know my handwriting's not the best, but thank you.
Thank you.
I'm here tonight to recognize and thank Tom Borchert for his service to the city. I had the pleasure of serving as an Alderman from 1991 to 2007, and part of the joy I had in representing the Second Ward was the excellent city manager and professional staff. He's a leader. He always thinks out of the box. He has 14 different personalities, sort of like trying to corral cats. But I learned a lot. I learned a lot about city government. I learned a lot about city financing. I learned a lot about group dynamics, and I have the highest regard for Tom Borchert. One thing you can always rest assured, he will get the facts. He's truthful. He is a man above reproach. And as we say in Rotary, "Service Above Self," Tom's life has been service above self. And we had some comments tonight that I, you know, I got my hackles up as a former Alderman, having been the chair for 14 years of the Finance Committee. The Finance Chair doesn't make any decision on his or her own. So, the comments that the Finance Chair raised the water rates is patently not true. That takes a committee report, and it takes a council vote. I encourage the citizens out there that think we have trouble with finances to get yourself educated, read the Moody's Report, look at our comprehensive financial statement. Also, I really dislike hearing chambers, people use value-laden words such as kickbacks. If you think there's a kickback, you take that information to the state's attorney. There's nothing illegal. There are no kickbacks for Aldermen in this city. And quite frankly, we are fortunate for the caliber of ethics in this committee, in this community, and our elected officials and our professional staff hold everyone to the highest regard. Good luck, Tom. I know you'll, and Joanie will have great retirement, and we love you.
Thanks, Alderman Vanek.
Next, Kathleen Sullivan, 133 Pine Street.
Kathleen Sullivan, 133 Pine Street. Good evening. We received the front porch in our mailboxes for June, and it's got the stormwater comprehensive plans, so we're glad to see that we're getting some attention. We do want to say, though, that since we had put the contract into place back in April here, the city, that we had, or March, sorry, we said that we would cover it. We were assured by City Manager Burke, Public Works Director Hughes, and Public Works Committee Chair Kennedy that we would be talking about it regularly at Public Works Committee meetings, and we'd be talking about it at City Council meetings, the status of the contract. And we haven't really done that to the level that we said we would, and so, and then we had this memo that said, what the, at the last meeting, we talked about what committees were going to be doing, and on the pending list for the Public Works Committee, active management of the Burke RJN contract didn't appear. And the day after the City Council meeting and the Public Works Committee and all those meetings two weeks ago, a day and a half after, Pine Street again flooded over its banks, the curves, on the Wednesday, that we received calls from several of the press people. We also flooded over our banks on that Sunday of Memorial Day weekend, and so, and some of the houses did take on some water. When we talked back in August, when I first came to City Council and I did my response, it was not just about the flooding, but also about the response that we got from the police, who are the only ones on duty after 5:00 and on the weekends. And so, on that Sunday, we had been told at that time previously that the police had been trained that if they came upon a flooded area, that they would stop their vehicle and they would block off the street. But my neighbors watched a police car drive, was going to turn onto Pine Street during the flooding on the Sunday, saw that there was flooding, turned and drove away. Okay? Other neighbors saw that. They called the police department. They said, "Please come and block the street." They said, "We're sorry, we're too busy. So, please put a no-wake ordinance in on our street." That's what broke our windows the last time. So, we really would like that to be addressed. Still, we think it's still important, and that's why we keep asking for it to be on the agenda. In addition, we did have a brief power interruption that day, which was why I wasn't home to witness the stuff because I just left. So, both of the problems still are active, and we want to make sure that everyone's aware. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen.
And last, we have Erin Vanderwall, and she's representing 209 North York Street, City Hall.
Our deputy clerk, Erin Vanderwall. Okay, Dungy's to her right.
Yes, I'm also joined by Dorothy Schmidtke and Pat Dungy, and we are Tom Borchert's other women. Tonight, we come before you with one voice, so that we can go on record, which, being under Patty, I know all about doing, to say thank you to Tom Borchert. So, thank you, Tom. Thank you for guidance, vision, friendship, and support that extends far beyond 40-hour work weeks. Thank you for 40 years of service to Elmhurst, which is not just the city we work for, but also the place that all three of us call home. Sorry, I feel like I'm going to cry. I'd like to share a quote that I think sums up how we all feel about you, Tom. "I've heard it said that people come into our lives for a reason, bringing something we must learn, and we are led to those who help us most to grow if we let them and help them in return. Well, I don't know if I believe that's true, but I know I'm who I am today because I knew you. Knowing you and working for you has been our honor and pleasure, and we wish you all the best in the future. Thank you, Tom."
And that happy but sad note concludes public forum, Mr. Mayor.
Right. And we'll officially close the public forum portion of our meeting and go on to our consent agenda, which is item six. If this time, is there anyone with a question, discussion on any particular item, please indicate that now. Hearing none. I just for motion and a second to approve the consent agenda in its entirety. Alderman Healy with a motion. Alderman York with a second. Clerk Spencer, if you could please call the role.
Healy.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Hipskin.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Morley.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Heza.
Aye.
Guttenkopf.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Palomsky.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays. The consent agenda's passed in entirety. And onto item seven, committee reports. Clerk Spencer, if you could please read the recommendation, please.
It is therefore the recommendation of the Finance Council Affairs and Administrative Services Committee that the City Council direct the city attorney to prepare an amendment to the municipal code of ordinances, changing the water rates and sewer rates for the city of Elmhurst, effective for usage build on or after July 1, 2011, as follows.
Thank you, Clerk. It's time to ask for a motion and a second to put this report on the floor. Alderman Hipskin with a motion, seconded by Alderman York. Discussion. Chairman Hipskin?
Um, yes, this is an 8% increase in the water and sewer rate on both sides. It really boils down to, I'm sure everybody's read the report, what this boils down to is keeping the water and the sewer either a subsidized city fund or a user fund. I'm more in favor of a user fund, as it always has been, so that's why I support this report. And if anyone has any questions or comments, I'd be happy to answer.
Alderman York, then I'll go to Alderman Levin, I'm sorry.
Um, well, thanks. Chairman Hipskin's hit on the basic essence of, of the rate increase. You know, the report's like two and a half pages. It takes a little bit to digest. And then I think equally important are the financial charts that follow the report. And the biggest concern, I think, that we had as a committee, and there was, you know, some comments made tonight in public hearing based on the newspaper report, and newspapers, unfortunately, are limited to a very small amount of time, but this was a topic of discussion in committee for the better part of an hour, I believe, at, at just the last meeting, not to mention all the other meetings that went on. But a, a big concern of mine, and I think other committee members also, was, you know, the, the cash balances in these funds and maintaining the cash balances. And what Chairman Hipskin referred to as subsidies is, in effect, what we've been doing for the past several years, is by actually using the cash balances to kind of pay for some of the water that we're using and some of the infrastructure improvements that go on, especially in the sanitary side. So, reluctantly, I'm in full support of this report. My signature's on it, so that's really no surprise to anybody. It, it's one of these things that we just don't have an awful, a lot of alternative to. Earlier today, I asked Marilyn Gaston at the last minute, and she did a wonderful job, as she usually does, just to put together some numbers, but if we look out five years for the, just the water department, in five years, the total water costs go from $8.8 million to $10,650,000. 45% increase in the water consumption, what we buy water from the DuPage Water Commission for, it's going to go up 45.7% in those five years. If you look at all the other costs, the other operating costs, the administrative costs, all the costs associated with water delivery, water supply, all those types of things, that component of the cost goes up less than 10% over the entire five years, so less than 2% per year, which to me indicates that the city staff and is doing an awesome job of keeping costs at a very reasonable level going forward. So, if you take the time to read the report, take the time to look at the charts and absorb all this information, unfortunately, there is really short of the city subsidizing water usage in everybody's homes. There is no alternative to what we're doing this evening, and I'm very sad to say that, but that's the way I feel, and I am in support of this, and I hope everybody else can support it, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman York. Alderman Levin.
Just a couple of points. One is, to highlight what's in the report, is that we see that the DuPage Water Commission buys the water from the city of Chicago, so we're third in line in terms of setting the rates. And as the report says, since 2008, the DuPage Water Commission has increased rates to its members by 66.4% due to rate increases of 50.8% from the city of Chicago during the same period. And Alderman York is correct, except you misspoke. It's not the consumption going up 45%, it's those rates that are going up. And the aspect of the subsidy that's important is that if we make it so that the users pay for the water that they use, it gives an incentive to conserve water. And that's why it's pretty much, we are targeting the rate increase to what's being passed on to us, so we had very little choice. And the fund balances have to be maintained. If you look at the chart, you'll see they were at $7 million, and they're projected to go down to $3. It was unanimous report. It was a difficult... It was unanimous report, it was a difficult decision, but it was the only decision to be made, and I certainly am in support of this report as well.
Alderman Mulliner?
Yeah, I think you've heard pretty much everything that anybody can really say about this. This is something that has been kind of, as it was said, we're third in line in raising the rates, and we have to keep these fund balances where they need to be. We have a number of major projects that are coming on, and when people look at the sewer rates, you know, we're talking about both sides, both the water and the sewer rates, we have an anaerobic digester that's being put in at a cost of about 7 and 1/2 million dollars, which is going to be paid for over a number of years, and that has to come out of these funds, plus all of the sewer pipes, all the water pipes. So, you know, to keep these fund balances in line is a really critical thing for us to do. Yes, I have some grave concerns about the tremendous increases that we're seeing from the city and from the DuPage County Water Commission, and I've requested that we also look toward the state and DuPage County mayors and managers, to see if there's anything we can do to have a better say in what's going on with those rates, because the city of Chicago can't raise it any more than what they're raising for their own citizens, but we ought to be able to control how much they're raising it above what the cost is for them to produce the water. So, I think we need to be able to get a say in how much they're raising those water rates. Yes, DuPage County has its own issues with this, and I believe they're getting a better handle on it. So, I am in support of it, I don't like raising the rates, but I don't think we have a choice at this point.
Very good. Any other discussion or questions? Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question, and I just double-checked the report, if the Finance Committee could please clarify. I do understand the increase, I do understand that it is a tough decision, and I'm not really one to like to do any type of increases unnecessarily. In this case, I do believe that it is a necessary increase, but my only question on this, if it could be clarified, is would this increase, would the additional revenue, it did mention the anaerobic digester, would it cover any amount, any percentage, of the potential improvements that we might need coming out of the comprehensive study that we're doing, primarily the southern part of the city?
Unfortunately, not. We're not, A, we don't know the number, and we are not, this is for ongoing cost. I would love to tell you, yes, it is, but unfortunately, it's not.
Thank you. Alderman Guttenkopf?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When I was on the Finance Committee, we weren't discussing raising the rates quite this much, we were banding about some lower numbers. And I'm hoping that you can clarify for me a comment that's in the report. It sounds to me like the report is anticipating rate increases from the DuPage Water Commission that they have not yet implemented, and that we're raising rates, although they have not yet completely implemented theirs. And it's in the, effectively, the second paragraph of the report, where it says, "DuPage Water Commission projects a minimum 10 percent annual increase in its water rates for members for each of the next five years." Have they already raised the rates to us, and is there a way that we can postpone some of this rate increase until they actually implement their rate increase?
Well, actually, we could. I mean, we could put this off to a period of time. The increase that, when you were on the Finance Committee, we're unaware of, was a quarter percent going away? And that quarter percent, I believe, is 14 or 15, in 2014 or 15, I'm not exactly sure. When that goes away, that quarter percent will then be put on to the water rates. I would rather have a number of slight increases, as opposed to coming back and giving the citizens of Elmhurst a, you know, a 78 percent increase in one year. If we are overbudgeted, obviously, you're familiar with our financial practices, we're conservative, we can back off. That quarter percent is going away, no matter what, it's not going to go. So, I'd rather have our fund balances in good shape, and steadily move up the rates, as opposed to one large increase.
Very good. Alderman Mulliner?
Yeah, for this year, the 10 percent increase has already occurred from DuPage County. We're already beginning, I believe it's June 1st, implementing a loss on the monies, because we're not collecting as much as we would be normally collecting. When it says the projection is, it's more for the next four years. This year, the projection, it's guaranteed, we're getting a 10 percent increase, which was not, when you were on the committee, we were not talking about a 10 percent, but they did come through and say for this year, it's going to be 10 percent. They've already implemented that. I believe it was June 1st that they began their implementation. And then, the next four years after that, they've told us that they're going to go for a 10 percent increase.
Follow-up, please? So, this increase is going to be followed by an increase for each year, for the next five years, and then yet another increase in 2015 to cover the quarter percent sales tax, sunsetting?
Yes.
Correct.
Yeah, if, again, going back to the schedule, based upon a meeting that our finance staff had with the DuPage Water Commission representatives, which occurred, I think, just slightly before our last committee meeting, that was when we got the good news on the five-year, 10 percent a year increases. And so, if you look again at the schedule on the water rates, you'll see that it's been amended to show projections right now of 8 percent for the next five years. Now, if they could go up, they could go down, depending on what other things happen extraneously, you know, beyond our control, but right now, this is what staff is recommending, as annual increases going forward. As you're aware, we review these annually, so.
Very good. Alderman Pezzle?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few questions, I do not recall. Number one, did we raise this rate last year? If so, how much? And if we raised it, was it in exact accordance with what we were raised by the county, or did we raise it more or less? Maybe Chairman Hipskin?
I don't remember the exact rate, but yeah, we keep it, we keep it as much of a user fee as possible, so if you use a lot of water, as opposed to, you know, someone that conserves water. So, we keep it pretty, as close as we can, but I don't remember the exact rate.
If we could perhaps...
Marilyn Gaston, we have, does somebody want answers?
Do you want to answer? I don't care. Go ahead.
The previous couple of years, yes, we have increased it, it's based, primarily, it's based on what the DuPage County Commission sends to us. And last year, I believe it was 15 percent, if I'm correct, and the year before that, it was 15 percent as well. We've seen significant increases in the dollar amounts and the percentages that DuPage County's been sending us, because of their issues that they have, that they had with the Water Commission. So, we've had some significant increases. This is actually a lower increase than we've done in the past few years.
And Alderman Mulliner is right, it was 15 last year, it was 7 and 1/2 the year before, because that one's the actual...
Right, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so it was 7 and 1/2 the year before.
And if we can expound on the DuPage Water Commission, they had given us some pretty significant increases. There was, there was some financial mismanagement within the DuPage Water Commission, and now, listen to this, they were giving, they were rebating back to the municipalities more than they should have, depleting their fund balances. So, we, Elmhurst residents, were getting a lower cost to our water than was the real, was really the cost. And that's pretty significant. It wasn't, there wasn't, there wasn't anything, it was financial mismanagement there, you know, there's been, it's been alluded to, that there were, you know, other things going on. It was, it was DuPage County not accounting for their water rates correctly, giving us rebates and lower water rates than they should have been doing. So, that's why those increases were so steep from there.
Quick follow-up?
Alderman Pezzle, go ahead.
So, I guess, just to be sure, to answer the question, the amount we raised the rate last year, was it the same, more or less than the amount raised to us by the county? Does anyone know that answer?
So, otherwise, we'd make a profit on the water, is what you're asking?
Did we raise the percentage, the exact same that was passed on?
There, it's almost impossible, on an annual basis, to get it to the exact piece. We keep it as close as possible, and, you know, our finance department keeps those increases, as long as they're significantly, I mean, if we have to step it up over a three-year basis, so we don't see a 78 percent, but we keep it as close to the mark as possible. But it's not exact, it's almost impossible to do exact piece, but we'll try and keep it as close to the mark as possible.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, just so everybody understands, this quarter percent sales tax was voted in by referendum, in fact, one of the taxpayers mentioned that. It was voted into referendum, put the system in also to actually help local systems. So, we've been actually benefiting locally from that sales tax, being able to put new water mains in, et cetera. That will go away after the bonds are paid off, unfortunately. That's a substantial amount of money, that will end up costing more dollars. The advantage of the sales tax was that every, people that didn't live in DuPage County actually paid for that. People would often come across the border, shop at Oak Brook or Elmhurst or in DuPage County, and pay sales tax, which actually kept our water infrastructure at discount to our taxpayers. So, it is a substantial amount of money that will go away, once those bonds are retired, so.
And we, you know, will reap the benefits of a quarter percent less sales tax.
Right, exactly. And fortunately, all those communities will be affected, once that quarter percent goes away. Now, we're hoping maybe we could lobby Chairman Cronin and possibly the legislator, to see if they could reinstate that. It's something that we will be doing, I believe, at a municipal level. The DuPage mayors and managers, it was brought up by Alderman Mulliner, we'll do whatever we can to try to keep that in place, but as of right now, it goes away, as soon as those bonds are paid off, so. Alderman Levin?
Just one other thing, even with this 8 percent increase, the 08, 09 end-of-year fund balance was 7.8 million dollars, and even with this projected rate increase, we're going to be, you know, somewhere in the 3.6 million range, so we're trying to offset the fund balance decrease, too.
Mr. Borchert, what's that quarter percent realized Elmhurst, would you say? In just a ballpark number, was it a million, 2 million?
I think it amounts for Elmhurst, a couple of million dollars.
Per year, correct?
Yes.
So, that's a sizable amount of money. That's why I wanted to bring that up, so. Very good. Okay. Any other discussion before I call the roll? Hearing none? Clerk Spencer, if you could, please call the roll.
Hipskin?
Aye.
York?
Aye.
Healy?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Morley?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Pesa?
Aye.
Guttenkopf?
Aye.
Leader?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Bram?
Aye.
Palmski?
Aye.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays, the report passes. Onto item eight, which is reports and recommendations of appointed and elected officials, updates, initially from myself. I would like to, I'll try to keep my comments as short as possible, so we can move on, we've got many, many big things happening today, but I will be brief. I spent three days in Springfield the week before session ended, 24th through the 26th. Good news, lobbied to save the local municipal share, and we did. So, the local municipal share that was potentially going to go away, which is roughly about 10 cents on the dollar that you pay into your state income tax, which comes back based on population, back to our local municipality, which for us is about $4 million, which could have gone away, or a part of it could have gone away, which we need every penny of that, was in fact saved. And I thank the legislator for their credence and for their leadership, and all the mayors that were down there, because there was many mayors down there, in addition to myself. So, we tried to have a mayor down there almost every day for the last 30 days of session, so that we had a DuPage or even Cook County presence. Mayors from all over the state were literally making sure that those legislative leaders knew that it was important for us. And the bad news, education and human services will suffer severe cuts, and for me, as a mayor and a champion for public schools, that was very, very frustrating, especially in the early childhood programs, which our numbers are growing, so. The new legislative maps also had good and bad news. The thing I was concerned about was that our town would not get divvied up into seven or eight different legislative districts. That did not happen. We ended up getting one district, one senate district, one house district. The challenge there is, we have several, there are 19 legislators that happen to be in the Republican Party, that are going to be pitted against each other in this process. One of it's, which is a former classmate of mine, his father's in the back room, then it's Rabeletti, it's Representative Rabeletti, Representative Nibbo, and Representative Belloc, who are three quality legislators who are put in the one-house district. So, we're going to see how that works out, but very, very challenging for good people that I think we all respect and care a lot about. Our new senate district was divided, and actually, Elmhurst is very strongly represented, but Senator Dillard will be, the current senator of a southern suburb to our south, Hinsdale will be coming into Elmhurst. Senator Dillard's a very well-respected legislator, very bipartisan guy. I worked with Senator Dillard in the past, so I think that will do Elmhurst well. We'll see if he has any opposition as well, too. Congressional seats, Congressman Roskam will be no longer our congressman, as of next year, and we will be put into congressional district to our east. So, the need, the need to be bipartisan is going to be more and more of a, I've always been a bipartisan mayor, and I'm going to stress that that is very, very important, that we be bipartisan, because we're going to have to work with both sides of the aisle to get things done, both at the state and at the federal level. From what I could see, there's going to be more and more burdens that will be shifted on local government, especially in the area of public education. When, when literally billions of dollars are taken out of public education, those dollars are going to have to come from someplace, whether it's cuts, whether it's local government being very progressive and trying to embrace new growth, and that I think this Kay and McKenna report gives us many, many areas of our community where we can utilize economic development tools, whether it's TIF district and SSA, business enterprise zones. We're going to need to be as creative as possible to bring economic development into this community, because the funds are not going to be coming like they were from the state. I think the legislator was very, very clear as to them cutting education and human services. Human services affects Ray Graham's, the Clearbrooks, all these agencies that care for the most vulnerable people that literally connect here for themselves. So, as a mayor, I was trying to fight for everybody. We saved our municipal side, but there's going to be many, many other areas that are affecting our local governments, that the need to be progressive, the need to be abrasive to new growth, is going to be more and more essential by the city governments to help those other levels of government. And those other levels of government are going to need to be understanding and help us with those tools, so that we can do that, we can bring that home. Many, many mayors prior to me put in development tools to make our downtown, the downtown that it is, to make 83 and North Avenue, the business district that that is, Lake and Walnut, those are all pioneer ideas and leadership tools that were put in place prior to many of us. So, I encourage us to take leadership vision with the future, and study this report, because I think we've got a lot of opportunities that we can embrace. We are going to be approving a new city manager contract, and the new city manager actually is in the audience, who will be taking the realm July 11th, Mr. Gerbowski, based on his confirmation tonight. He is with his wife Kirsten, and son Michael and Anna, and brother Dan and mother Jerry. And the reason why I think Mr. Gerbowski was so selected was because of his economic development ability, what he's done in Wheeling, what he's done in Manuka, 6,000 new homes, Restaurant Row on Milwaukee Avenue, beautiful downtown in Manuka, and big box retailers that he recruited for his community. So, I think our new city manager is up to the challenge. I know this new city, this our city council is very, very enthused with the tradition of what Mr. Borchert, the current city manager, has laid the groundwork for, which Assistant City Manager Kopp will be taking the handoff for the next month, and will be assisting our new city manager in the future. And I think we've got a great team to make that happen, so. So, that's my report. I'm a very encouraged mayor, very enlightened mayor, very much passion of, I think, a great future for the city of Elmhurst. Anybody like to add anything? Anybody like to add anything? Okay. I'll go on to our, our appointment. It's a resolution, it's item number nine on our agenda. Clerk Spencer, if you'd be so kind enough to read the resolution.
A resolution approving a city of Elmhurst city manager employment agreement.
All right. At this time, I ask for a motion and a second to approve the agreement. Alderman York with a motion, seconded by Alderman Healy, and discussion. Hearing none? I think we can, we'll do a roll call vote. Clerk Spencer, if you please call the roll.
York.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Morley.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Pesa.
Aye.
Guttenkopf.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Palomsky.
Aye.
Hipskin.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays.
They got one more aye from the mayor. There we go.
And the clerk, too.
That's right. All right, we have an unanimous vote on the, the resolution confirmation. Well, the swearing-in ceremony will take place at a later date. Mr. Grabowski will be officially taking the realm on July eleventh, and he will also be making several appearances, one of which will be at City Hall, and one another will be out through the business, Elmhurst Chamber of Commerce and Industry and the Business Alliance will, will be conducted at a future date at Community Bank of Elmhurst as well, too. So we're going to, Jim, we're going to be getting you out there shaking hands really, really quick here, so. And Mr. Grabowski, if you please stand up and... And at this time, item number ten, which will be an appointment. This appointment is our, our transition team, city manager, Assistant City Manager Kopp, also our fire chief, was, was a vital component to this, this whole process, and, and did a great job in getting to the finals. And Michael, you're going to be assisting Mr. Grabowski, but during the interim process, you're actually mayor city manager, acting city manager for, for this transition. And as, as Mr. Grabowski takes the helm on July eleventh, we'll be assisting Mr. Grabowski as well, too, over the next several months to, to make this happen. So the baton is a smooth handoff, as always. We appreciate your, your ability, your dedication to the city of Elmhurst, along with Mr. Borchardt. So with that, Clerk Spencer, if you could please read the, the appointment.
I just have an appointment of Mike Kopp as interim city manager.
And at this time, I need a motion and a second to put the appointment on the floor, please. Alderman Muller with a motion, seconded by Alderman Hipskin. Discussion?
That's it.
All right. And all, all in favor, we can do this by voice, but all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, ayes have it. Very good. On to eleven, other business. Any other business? Hearing none, announcements? Any announcements? Oh, City Manager Borchardt.
Just a quick announcement, DuPage County celebrates Bike to Work Day, and special for Elmhurst on the first day of that Bike to Work Day, Monday, this coming Monday, one of Elmhurst's residents, chairman of the board of DuPage County, Dan Cronin, will be riding his bike to work, beginning from the Prairie Path at Spring Road, and kicking off the Bike to Work for the, for the week, and kind of celebrating DuPage County and the DuPage County Prairie Path and Elmhurst Spring Road Business District.
Very good. What was the date of that game, Mr. Borchardt?
This coming Monday.
June thirteenth.
Monday, thirteenth. And scheduled bike off is at seven AM on Monday.
Seven AM, got it. Very good. All right, before I go on for other announcements, I also want to make an announcement that I thought was, was very, very gratifying for the city of Elmhurst. The Conservation Foundation, which is a environmental agency, presented us, presented us the city of Elmhurst, the Clean Water Award to the city of Elmhurst for two thousand and ten, for keeping Salt Creek, Salt Creek clean and healthy. So it was given to us June second, two thousand and eleven, and I think that speaks volumes to the quality of the community that we are, for the care we take with our water, and, and I think that just speaks volumes for the type of community that Elmhurst is. So I wanted to, I wanted to recognize all of you, because really, it's, it's the, it's the staff, it's the management, it's the leadership, and it's the people that care so much about our water that is the reason why this award, I think, was given, so. Any other announcements? Alderman Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just two brief announcements. One, Alderman Palomsky and myself will be having a third ward town hall this upcoming Wednesday, June eighth, at seven o'clock at the Elmhurst Library. And the second was in our packet, in regards to the streets, I think it was Caroline Avenue around East End Park. The expansion of parking will be going from twenty-six parallel slips to approximately fifty-nine parking spots, so that will at least help mitigate some of the parking issues around East End Park. Thank you.
Alderman York.
I just have a couple of follow-ups, actually. Alderman Bram hit on my first one. East End Park, and I think it kind of goes to all parks, this is the time of year, the kids just got out of school and everything. My daughter had softball practice today at East End Park, and due to some calls that I'd received, I decided to go finish up my reading for tonight's meeting, sit under a shade tree at East End Park and just kind of observe traffic and whatnot. But there's construction, first of all, there's construction going on, on Caroline Avenue currently, to facilitate the work that Alderman Bram just spoke of. And so you throw that element in with kids who are excited to be going to the pool for the first day we've had in the nineties in like three million years, it, it's a dangerous situation. So I would ask, you know, I'm appealing to everybody who's here, but everybody who watches the city council meetings, use some common sense, pay attention to kids on bikes, kids walking, they're not paying attention to you. Be careful, be considerate, and this would go to every park in the entire city. You know, hopefully this will be done in the next two to three weeks, maybe three to four weeks, we'll have the construction done there, but a plus, adding parking spots at East End Park is a good thing for the city. We're just going to need to be careful in the, in the meantime, to make sure that we're safe and we don't cause injury to some excited kids that are going to the pool for a day of fun. To follow up on the, on the, on the Bike to Work Week, I'm going to actually ride with Chairman Cronin. I know Alderman Guttenkopf rides her bike periodically to work out in Wheaton, too, so I'm hoping she'll join us, but that's an exciting event on the thirteenth, but the entire week, the eleventh to the seventh, seventeenth, is the Bike to Work Metro Week, too. So there's actually, on Tuesday, June fourteenth, and Friday, June seventeenth, there'll be a table hosted by DuPage County, the Active Transportation Alliance, which is the biking organization, the Elmhurst Bike Task Force, and the Elmhurst Bicycle Club, from six-thirty to eight-thirty in the morning, there'll be free coffee there. And then also this coming Wednesday, the first farmer's market, the Bike Task Force will be there to talk to people on how to use their bikes to do everyday tasks, shopping, going to the library and things like that. So it, it's a good alternative transportation, so, thank you.
Very good. Anybody else? Okay. One other thing I want to add, I believe the Elmhurst JC Carnival is Thursday through Sunday. They're selling weekend passes for that through the Elmhurst Chamber of Commerce and Industry, and they're having a special Kids' Day, I believe, Saturday morning for kids with, with challenges that can ride for free. And Rich Rosenberg and the Special Kids' Day group is putting that on Saturday morning, so please, please note for your kids, and if you have kids with challenges, there's plenty of opportunities, so. Any other announcements? Okay. Now we go to our recognition of our retired city manager. I will take the pulpit to my right. One sec. I'm sure you're going to be hearing many of us sing praises to a man who has given forty years of his life to the city of Elmhurst, but I'm going to start, so. Tom Borchardt, when I, when I first ran for mayor, I sat down with Tom and, and just to give him peace of mind that I was, I was running for mayor, because I love the city of Elmhurst, as I know he did, and still does, and will always love Elmhurst. And, and as a person who didn't hold office, he was a wealth of information, and was very, very sharing and open to me, which, which was great, and I appreciate that. As a mayor, I couldn't ask for a better city manager. This guy is a pro. This, this man cares for the city, he's lived in the city, what, since he was in his twenties? So he married his bride, Joanie, who's here tonight as well, too, I believe, which I believe he met here as well. So he, he has passion for the community, he is a man of distinguished honor and honesty. Character counts is Tom Borchardt. If you look up the definition of character counts in the dictionary, there's a picture of Tom Borchardt right there. So, and he, he tells you like it is. He is probably one of the best politicians who was never elected. Because, he, he, he could sweet talk and dance, and I, I give him a ton of credit, because in working with, I thought I could work with, I've worked with councils and boards in the past, and this, this guy can do it like the best of them. And I, I give him a ton of credit, he's very open, he, he always gave everybody time, whether he agreed with them or not, and I think that's the quality of our city manager, and that's why we've had two city managers here in the last, gosh, forty, almost fifty, sixty years, it looks like. So, Mr. Grabowski, you've got some great shoes to fill, and I'm sure you're going to be able to do a great job at that, but Tom, I, I can't thank you enough for being a servant leader for the city of Elmhurst. I, I remember the, the day that Alderman Kennedy and I were debating who was going to handle the stormwater meeting, and we're sitting in my office, because we, we figured out this isn't for Tom, this is, the mayor and the chair of public works has got to handle this meeting, because it's going to be crazy. And City Manager Borchardt walked into the meeting and he goes, and we said, no, Tom, we're going to, we're going to handle the meeting. He goes, no, you're not. I'm the city manager, I'm doing it. You guys just got elected, you're, you're good guys, you, you know, they're going to come in swinging. And, and, and the people were frustrated, and understandably, when you have water and stuff, but he's been through this, he understands the, I think, the temperament of people. He was probably the best Christian I, I could have ever thought to see as a city manager when people were saying some of the things that they were saying. I, I know I was ready to jump out of my chair to say, this guy's a good guy, he cares about you, just people are frustrated. But Tom, I appreciate all that you've done, and Jimmy Kennedy and I walked out of that meeting the next morning and said, thank God for Tom Borchardt. Because that was, that was very, very humbling, and again, a very, very good Christian leader that was able to, to deal with people that are probably at the worst situation in time in their life, so. And that's the many, many things that you've achieved, with, with dealing with, seeing the, the quarry get built in for, for retention, Salt Creek, the berms that you, you put in, the, you know, all the capital projects, the three TIF districts that you saw happen, our central business district, which is beautiful because of your leadership. North and eighty-three, which, eighty-three and St. Charles, which was, you know, a rundown mall that, that you brought back to life, and, and, and you're, and, and Walnut and Lake Street that is, is beautiful, again, because of, of your leadership. And it's not easy, because you've got people that, some that don't want to see any development, no change, and keep it like it was a hundred years ago. And you've got other people, I think many of the people up here, and many of the people that elected us, that want to see Elmhurst move forward. And working with the schools, working with the parks, working with the county, working with the state, the guy, the guy's the best. So, so I can't say thank you enough. You've been a, a great manager for a new mayor that definitely was a little wet behind the ears, and, but needed a little bit of guidance, and, and I think we're a great team, so. Tom, if you'd like to come up for, to receive your plaque, I'd appreciate it. The Distinguished Service Award to Thomas P. Borchardt, recognition of devoted service to the city of Elmhurst from nineteen seventy-one to two thousand and eleven. God bless Tom.
After that wonderful, can I reconsider? I'm profoundly, profoundly thankful and appreciative of, of your leadership, of the city council's support, and mayors and councils before that supported me, Alderman Vanek, Kathy Jordan, her husband Phil Jordan while he was an alderman, looking around the room, so much support. And that's what it is, it's not one person at all, it's not one individual, it's, it's a team, and, and Elmhurst is, is served by a wonderful team, has been, and I have every confidence will continue to be. The other ladies in my life, as they introduced themselves, that work in the mayor manager's office, Dorothy, Pat, and Erin, couldn't, couldn't nearly do what, what needs to be done without their help, and then it's the city management team. Folks here, Marilyn Gaston, Tom Trozine, Pat Morley, Brian Berghager, Gary Smith, Mike Hughes, Bruce Stubiel, Jeff Bassor, Mike, Mike Stenson. It's IT, it's IT. Technology stuff is just confusing for an older guy. Hubauer and Chief Kopp, just great, great, great members of the management team. Working with Don Starino has been just a wonderful experience, he's a, he's a pro, he's a, he's a, he's a great member of the, of the circle of what do we do, how do we get through this? You got the technical, you got the legal, you got the practical, you got to put it all together to make something work. It's not, not really the engineering that I studied, two plus two is only four, and it's only one right answer. There's lots of ways to try to, try to make things work, so. You know, it's a reverse thing, you're saying thank you, I need to say thank you to you all. It's been truly a blessed career. I've enjoyed coming to work nearly every day, not, 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 not necessarily every night, but, but really enjoyed the work, and it's, it's my fortune to be able to help folks have a better way of, of life, and it's, it's a great community, it's because of great people, they were here before I got here, I hope I've moved it on and handed it off, handed it off, really look forward, was very impressed with Mr. Grabowski as he was going through the process, one of the few folks that, that did what he did to get ready to present himself well, which he did, I'm, I'm sure, which is why he's here, and it already tells me he's, he's not a, not a, not just a regular guy, he's a bit of an exceptional guy. So I think, I'm excited about him coming, I'm excited about the organization going forward, and I'm glad I live in this community, because it's one of the greatest places in the US of A to live, and thank you all, I very much appreciate it. I've got to say to my beautiful bride, Joan Marie, that I said thank you on May thirteenth, but I forgot to say thank you. First Monday nights that she's come, and I think, for granted, she said, I got to see one of these Monday nights at the city council meetings, but I couldn't do it without my family, with my wife, she's my partner through life, and we love you dearly, and I'm looking forward to a little more time together.
And as usual, we have our celebratory rocking chair, which City Manager Borchardt looks so good in. I believe there was a similar picture at that party we had for you recently, that you were in a similar chair with your eyes closed, sleeping with your granddaughter, I believe it was. It was awesome. So I'm sure there's a lot of people that would like to, to interject and say some, some things, so. Alderman Mulliner.
Tom Borchardt, what do you say about Tom Borchardt? The city of Elmhurst has been fortunate to have two city managers. That's an amazing statistic, when you really think about it. And Tom... And Tom stepped in as the assistant city manager when he needed to, and then became the interim city manager, and became the city manager, and for twenty-seven years, he's taken this city from a little quaint town, I would say, to what we have today, which is a thriving suburb of Chicago. He's served with, I believe, three city attorneys. Only had two city managers. He's had many, many city councils, many different personalities to deal with, and he's done a magnificent job in helping us to understand the culture of Elmhurst, the history of Elmhurst, and what direction Elmhurst should go. Many people have said that it's the city council that has done a lot of the things, and yeah, the city council's been here to support the direction that the city manager has been able to put forth. Probably the, the greatest thing that I can say about Tom Borchardt is, he is probably the greatest coach that I've ever seen. Everybody says that Joe Newton's the greatest coach in Elmhurst. Joe Newton's a good coach. Tom Borchardt's a great coach. He took a team, and he's kept a fantastic team here of directors and of employees, kept them moving forward, has done great things for these, for this town, and he's taken the people who've come up here every two years as new members, and helped us to understand what direction it was to win in Elmhurst and to make this town what it is. Tom Borchardt, thank you for everything you've done, and I can't thank you and your wife, who, by the way, I've known a lot longer than you. Thank you and your wife, and I, and I hope you have a wonderful retirement, and we look forward to you being in town for a long, long time.
Well, I have mixed feelings tonight, because in losing Tom Borchardt, I am losing my closest friend and colleague in city government. Whatever success I have had these six years in being the alderman and, and alderman from the second ward is due to Tom. From our first conversation to our last, he has made me feel useful, wanted, and understood, and he has been unfailingly helpful. Sixteen of Tom's four decades of service were during the Marcucci era, and one could not be with either of them for long without seeing the glow and the feeling of the warmth of the fires of confidence that burned so strongly and readily in both of them. In a long life, I have known many people, but I have never known a finer gentleman, one freer from conceit, to which it was his recognized duty to listen patiently and with every evidence, evidence of pleasure to whatever I might say to him upon any subject. This is a man sure in action, wise in counsel. Dealing with his staff, he is always clear, firm, fair, and a good judge of character. His is a well-trained intelligence, a quiet, discreet man, adroit in negotiation, never taking himself overly serious. Every day, people did not do certain things, and did do certain things in certain ways because Tom Borchardt was city manager. There was never a hint of scandal associated with the city of Elmhurst while Tom was at the helm. For to Tom, any action committed against the light of conscience is evil. For forty years, he has been a fort and foundation for all the citizens of Elmhurst. He has worn the shield and buckler of faith against the fiery arrows. Faith in action is his credo. That has given him the strength to withstand difficult days. After all the years, he is the living embodiment of the words trust, truth, virtue, justice, the call of duty, the shining example, the act of service. He leaves us a legacy, solid, quite solid. In the night I walked, the town slept, the dark streets stretched before me, the night winds prowled the trees, and the leaves rustled quietly. There was in the streets of Elmhurst a sense of space and quiet position, of moist coolness and unhurried time, and I thought, what a wonderful place Elmhurst is to live, to grow up in, to marry and have children, and to grow old in. This gift, this shining place, this Elmhurst is mine and yours because of such a man as Tom Borchardt.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman.
Tom Borchardt, thank you for your example. You've stood straight. You've been a great example for us, for our people in the past, the present, and certainly in the future. I appreciate the time we've had together, and thank you very much, and thank you from our town.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Tom Borchardt, a lot has been said at your, I'll call it a retirement party, and also here tonight. I actually made a promise to myself tonight that I would not follow directly after Alderman Leader, so I will keep my, my comments brief. I think Alderman Leader and others who've already spoken have already covered a lot of the traits that you have brought to the city of Elmhurst. The one thing I really wanna emphasize is your dedication to customer service, and anybody who spends any time in customer service, no matter at what level or what job position, would give you the highest admiration to be able to, I will say, survive forty years in the customer service role. That really states the character that you have, the professionalism, the willingness to deal with all different types of personalities, myself included, across all of those years. The one thing I think that previous city councils, as well as this city council, can take credit for is preparing you for many grandchildren, because you must have really, really acquired a great deal of patience dealing with the various individuals over the forty years that you've been our city manager. Thank you for paving the way for the city of Elmhurst. I, I'm sure you are proud to drive through the town every day and see everything that you have done over your forty years of time as our city manager. I know it is greatly appreciated by myself and by the forty-plus-thousand residents that reside here in the city of Elmhurst, so, thank you.
Well, one of the many reasons I love serving our citizens as clerk is that Tom's office is down the hall from mine. I've enjoyed a wonderful relationship with him, clerk to manager, and I look forward to do the same with our new city manager. And, Tom, you always were willing to allow the clerk's office to grow in our ideas and services. Supported early voting, send Erin and I to anything municipal clerks or DuPage clerks, big on collaborating with seniors, and it's really helped us achieve service to our community, and we appreciate it. Thanks.
Alderman Wegg, Mr. Chairman.
City Manager Borchardt, interesting, the two, last two years. I think a retirement party, and retirement and the word party, I think they mean the same thing, don't they? So, certainly after forty years, but you've been called a lot of different things, Mr. Borchardt, City Manager Borchardt, Assistant City Manager Borchardt, and it's about time you've earned the right to be called grandpa. So, congratulations, thank you very much, from a citizen of the city and also an alderman. Appreciate it. It's great to know you.
Alderman Dunn.
Although I've only been an elected official just over a month, I'm lucky enough to have met Tom a few years earlier when I served on Mayor DCN, his financial task force as the chair of the Public Works Committee. Tom made an impression immediately, and he extended himself, made himself very available, and just gave me the feeling that city government works well and is very accessible, and, and it's a, it's an outstanding organization, and it gave me a lot of motivation to, to proceed to this level. Tom also, right off the bat, extended an invitation to, to have me in the city hall after the election, and was able to get a lot of background and a lot of insight from him. Had the opportunity to visit the Public Works Garage today with Director Hughes, and I could tell there's a lot of pride in the workforce there, and there's a lot of passion, and that certainly comes from the top. So, I think we have a, a great group of city workers with a high desire to be very successful and, and serve the community, and, and again, there's a lot of pride, and, and that comes a lot from, from Mr. Borchardt. So, thank you, Tom. Wish I could've known you longer, but I'm sure we'll see you around town. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, Tom, I've known you a little bit longer than Alderman Dunn. I met you twenty years ago this year, when I came to work for the city, and so I've been, I've had the pleasure of working with you in two different roles, and I've appreciated both of them, both from the perspective of an employee of yours, and then on the city council, working with you in a very different way. And all through that, I've appreciated your demeanor and careful attention to detail, your thoughtfulness, and the way you've approached problems and issues, and your support of me both as an alderman and supporting resident questions and helping me answer them, as well as you've supported me as an employee all those years ago. So, so, thank you. It's been a real honor to serve with you.
Alderman Morley, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman, I thought it was very telling tonight, when Mr. Borchardt received his plaque, that he didn't go back and sit in his chair, only for a picture. I mean, I really think it says something. Tom is a leader. He leads by example, but he always stressed team, and here he is, he went back to his chair to be part of the team. He just didn't wanna be singled out. I think that shows in, in his work. It was just fantastic, so I, I just wanna thank you for that, Tom. Certainly impossible to cover all of the achievements that Tom has done. I think his son said, after about three hours of people going on and on about what Tom had done, it's clearly, "I have not done enough in my life." So, I think we were three hours into it, and we still hadn't finished the list. Tom is a humble man who treats everyone with respect. Tom is certainly one that leads by example. I think it says something that after forty years of hard work and dedication in this town, that Tom can still walk around town and hold his head high and walk his dog around the neighborhood. I mean, I think that goes back to the way that Tom has treated everybody from the day he got into office, with that level of respect. And I think that says something that he's able to, to retire here in town. The mayor said that your picture would be in the dictionary under character counts. I'm curious if it's sporting that fantastic mustache from the eighties. I will say this, I'm very glad that you're not going away. I do suspect, if you're not careful, that your phone will be ringing off the hook, probably starting the first day of your retirement, so I'm warning you on that. And last but not least, certainly as an alderman, but more importantly, as a citizen, thank you very, very much for your dedication and your hard work.
Tom Borchardt, you walk your dog, you hold your head high, because you know to clean up after your dog, so that's, that's all the Alderman Morley was saying. You know, Tom, I've gotten to know you, I'm a relatively new council member, but I've had the opportunity to work with you through the chamber and the finance task force and some other projects, and you truly are a remarkable man. When we interviewed for New City Managers and the other council members were looking for someone who was gonna be here for twenty-seven years, I thought, "It's just not gonna happen." If it does, that's great, but it's just a remarkable tenure. The, the monument to your service is really the city. There are so many wonderful things that have happened in this town in just the fourteen or fifteen years I've been here, that show the leadership that you've demonstrated from the downtown to the new facilities. I think of the many things you've done, the fact that this city has weathered the storms so well, when we've gone through a recession, you read the paper, so many other towns are struggling with massive layoffs, with services cut, and massive debt, I'm not talking about Chicago, other suburban towns, and we have had your leadership to take us through and had such high-quality services that people have come to depend on, all under your leadership. I think I'd also like to say that you are truly a public servant. You are always out there making the community a better place. As I sat there at your retirement party, and I heard all the things you did through your church and through your volunteer service, you're just a remarkable human being. I'm glad you are city manager, and I'm glad to call you friend, and I'm glad, as a citizen, that you've been here to do all these things for us, and I hope to spend some time in your retirement. And lastly, I hope to know what you really think, but, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. I was thinking back, when I first met Mr. Borchardt, and I was thinking, twenty-seven years as a city manager, what have I been doing in this town for the past twenty-some years? And I've been raising my family in this town for twenty-five years, and basically, you've been raising the community for twenty-seven years, so I want to thank you for your time and dedication. This was a wonderful place to, to raise my family, and you had a lot to do with that. And I can't think of a more rewarding way to retire than to know you have such wonderful family, and you could sit in that rocking chair and have your grandchildren sit on your lap, and to me, that, that's reaping the best reward that you obviously deserve, so I wish you well, and thank you so much for all your service.
Alderman Kennedy, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Borchardt, the first time I met, I met you was, as Mike would say, as a customer, when I came in with my own problem, and I know you treated me as you have treated so many people in this city, and you reiterated, reiterated my belief that engineers are the smartest people that we know. If I could pay you, if I could pay you one compliment, it would be that you made Elmhurst, the town I grew up in, the same place I wanna raise my family. So, I thank you, and I have to cut in on Alderman Leader's side of things, where, with a Winston Churchill quote from the Battle of Britain, it said, "Never in the course of human history have so many owed so much to so few." I would say, "Never in the course of the history of Elmhurst have so many residents owed so much to one man." Thank you.
Excellent. Well said, Mr. Chairman. Alderman York.
To kind of follow up on, on Alderman Kennedy, the first time that I had an encounter with Tom was as a customer also, and we talked on the phone, and I, I don't think that I really got the answer I wanted to hear on the problem I called him about, but it was delivered just the way it delivers it to a lot of people, both on the positive and the negative. It was professional. It was accurate, probably. I don't even remember what the concern was now, but it took several phone calls, but each time the call was turned promptly, we visited, we talked about our issues, and we came to a resolution. I'm glad for you that you're in great health, that you have a lot of interests, you have a wonderful family, you have a beautiful community to call home, you live in a great world. And I know I personally look forward to seeing you around the neighborhood over the course of the next few years. You're a good man, a good Christian. Keep up your work and thank you so much for all that you've done to make this a place that we've chosen to raise our family as well. Thank you very much.
Very nice.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I've sat here and for the last 10 minutes, I've really kind of struggled to come up with words of what I want to say that either haven't already been said or that encompass what I feel or how I feel about City Manager Borchard. You know, I first got to know Tom, not as a city council member, but actually as a park board member. Got to know him a little bit there, but where I really got to sit down and talk to him a couple times was at York High School while he was watching his youngest son play basketball. And as a proud dad, as a proud resident, as a proud sponsor of York, that showed me something. And then staying on the family side, Tom's got a beautiful family and any of us that were at the event on May 13th saw that. They're supportive, obviously a very loving family, and I think that's something, whether you're a father or a mother or a son or a daughter, that's something that we all strive for and it's a beautiful thing when you see it. And thank you to his family for letting us have him on Monday nights because this ain't always fun and I know you heard about it, it's in some respects afterwards because it sometimes is not real easy. But also professionally, I try to strive, whether it's professionally, personally, elected, I try to strive to make something better once I leave. And when I think about once Tom Borchard walks out the door as city manager, how infinitely better Elmhurst is because Tom Borchard was here. And I'm here about 12 years and I just know in the last 12 years how much better this town has gotten under Tom's tutelage and support of mayors and elected officials. So I can, you know, over 27 years as city manager and 40 years as employee, that's, I guess that's the best thing I can say is Elmhurst is infinitely better than it was before Tom Borchard came on board. Thank you very much for your service.
Thanks, Alderman. Okay. Oh, City Treasurer Dyer.
Tom, what do you say but thank you? I've been, I started, I've been living in, I lived in Elmhurst for about 58 years now. I bypassed your tenure. I remember Bob Palmer, Bob Cole. I used to ask them questions, then it was you. I started my service to Elmhurst when you became city manager. Aaron is trying to find out that exact date, but it's beginning to be effort. But thank you. You made this town a nice place to live and obviously I liked it because I've been here for so long. Thank you for your work, for your service, and enjoy your retirement. You've earned it. Thank you.
Mr. Borchard, thank you for your service. I know I can't speak to it like most of the officials can, but I do want to say that you took the time to talk with me when I was just a candidate and just a resident and you didn't just talk with me, you called me back and made time for me and were so helpful. And I know all the background work that you did when I started with Cool Cities and how you made that organization accomplish what it was able to. And I appreciate all you've done. Looking forward to hopefully your assistance, just being around. And I also want to say that on the campaign trail, I ran into somebody who said, you know, you have no idea what you're missing by not being able to work alongside Tom Borchard. And from that, I just started to really pay attention and to more of what you had been doing. And I thank you for all of your service and you're a legend in our neighborhood. So, thanks.
City Attorney Don Starino.
I want to say thank you to Tom. I came here two years ago and change is never easy anyplace. And Tom was just so welcoming and so gracious and his wisdom and counsel really made me feel like I was part of the team and he did everything in his power, I know, to make me part of that team. In so many ways, as I've spent two years here, I've watched the town and he's the face, in many ways, he's the face of the town. All of you are, of course, all elected officials, but on a daily basis, people call upon Tom Borchard to make decisions, to make their life a little bit better, and he does it. And what Tom Borchard really thinks, as one of the aldermen alluded to, is how can we do the right thing and how can we make things better for Elmhurst? Every time we sit down on a Wednesday afternoon and he will talk about an issue, he'll look at me and say, "We're going to do the right thing. Don, you know, we're going to do the right thing." And that's exactly what Tom Borchard thinks. We're going to do the right thing. So, thanks, Tom.
At this time, I would ask the bride of Mr. Borchard, Ms. Joanie Borchard, to please come up to the dais and Mr. Borchard, if you'd please meet her out in front and we like to acknowledge both of you for your... Come on, no, get off the speaker. Thank you. It was a great night for a great man and we welcome, we welcome the new manager coming our way here in July 11th and City Manager Cap, we appreciate your hard work and your leadership and handing a baton off and making sure everything goes smooth and always being there for us as well and we appreciate everything. So with that, oh? City Clerk Spencer.
Yes, there's coffee and cake as soon as we adjourn out in the vestibule.
You know, I think, I think actually it was Anna, little Anna asked if we were having food afterwards. So Anna, Anna, we're in good shape. And we think alike because the mayor thinks about food all the time too. So at this time, ask for emotional adjourn. Alderman Morley, Secretary of Public Affairs, Alderman Levin, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.